To fund construction of homeless housing and boost services in the new year. In South Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Measure HHH aims to build 10,000 units of permanent supportive housing while Measure H is expected to raise $355 million a year for homeless services. While attention job seekers, hundreds of positions to help those who are homeless have recently opened up. Gil Reyes reports on a first-of-its-kind job fair with many more to come thanks to voter approval.
These job seekers gathered at City Hall want careers tackling the worst problem facing Los Angeles today: homelessness.
I was homeless at the age of 14. My mother was murdered on Christmas Eve 16 years ago. I wasn't accepted into my family due to my sexual orientation, so I just went out and decided to sleep on the streets.
Today, we're happy to report Charisse Ortega is no longer homeless or jobless. This is her at work with the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. She now gets paid to meet people on the street and connect them with housing and services, and more jobs like these have opened up to help the growing number of unsheltered people in LA County.
People who have experienced homelessness, been down on their luck, who need a helping hand up, and that's what we're here to do today.
South LA Councilmember Curran Price here to support the city's first-ever homeless services provider job fair. Some 30 employers are looking to fill 900 positions, jobs like social workers, outreach directors, case managers, and accountants. Many of these opportunities opened up with the passage of Measure H, the voter-approved tax to fund more services for the homeless. Mayor Eric Garcetti is also at the hiring event to support.
So the city of Los Angeles will continue doing this job fair every quarter until every position is filled. So tell your friends, come back if you don't get that job that you wanted today.
And land a career helping others. I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
At last count, the number of homeless people in LA County has surged 23% since the previous year. Measure H for homeless services and Measure HHH for homeless housing aim to reduce that number. Well, Pershing Square is about to get a lot more homey and inviting thanks to a nonprofit group called Pershing Square Renew. Here's Anna Marcos to show us what it's all about.
Pershing Square is about to get a new sparkle as city leaders and designers work to give the park a major makeover with a project called Pershing Square Renew.
We have many more people coming to live downtown. We have many more visitors coming to downtown. We have people with families in downtown, so we want this place to be that open-space town square that downtown Los Angeles deserves.
LA city leaders held a competition in 2015 asking for designs with a concept around radical flatness, the idea of leveling the entire park so it will be flat with the sidewalk. The winning design team has now developed its project and is revealing the details to the public for the first time.
We've migrated that to radical openness. It's really important for people to be able to see inside the park.
These days, it's still a pretty great space, but it's a lot of concrete and a lot of walls, and I think both the concrete and the walls need to sort of be able to move aside to have more of a park-like feel here in the square.
I'm very excited about what's the environment on Olive Street that'll be created with historic Biltmore and all of the great activity on Olive, and then to have the shade structure on that side of the street, you know, really creating a dynamic block, a pedestrian block.
Other changes will include adding trees, greenery, and a new pergola, an outside structure for shade. Residents even got to give their own input on what they would like to see in the park. The new Pershing Square could reopen for business sometime in 2018. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Former LA gang members are in for a surprise: free computers to help improve their lives. Gil Reyes reports from the city's latest PC giveaway.
The young people gathered behind the counter at Chinatown's Homeboy Industries and Homegirl Diner are serving up much more than just breakfast.
Homeboys has helped me get my son back. It's helped me realize who I am as a person. It's helped me to love myself so I can love my son and be a father, helped me go to school.
Well, Homeboy's been around for 30 years, started by Father Greg Boyle. And what we do is we help our gang members and convicted felons, people who've been in prison and juvenile camps, reentrance to society.
Helping these workers, too, are 50 free refurbished computers. Workers get in line to receive them thanks to the city's Our Cycle LA program. Our Cycle takes old city department office computers and repairs them for people in need. The idea comes from City Council President Herb Wesson, the city's information technology agency and their partners.
When you're looking at people who are coming out of gang life, people who are coming even out of jail, job skills, knowledge that could be accessed through the internet is extremely important.
For job searching, online courses for better careers, and so much more.
Most of the members of the council, especially somebody like myself, I come from the same environment that they came from. And so, as I've been blessed, I think it's important that we, in government, do what we can to bless the people we represent.
The computers come with three free years of internet. The city hired the nonprofit group Human IT to upgrade the city's old PCs with the latest Windows 10 software.
This is the first time that my mom has actually been able to participate in a distribution because she currently lives just outside Detroit, so this is really special for me. And then second, this is our first-ever surprise giveaway.
A surprise, too, for Nicole Cordero, a single mother of six working to turn her life around. She says a home computer will help.
I'm not going to give up on my children. I've let them down in the past, and this coming to Homeboy's has changed my life.
I feel like it's already preparing me for college because at the end of the day, like, we all know that technology's only advancing, so I need to, like, get with the program.
Over the past three years, the city's Our Cycle giveaway program has given away more than 3,100 computers to people who need them most, and more computers are on the way for 2018. Reporting outside Homeboy Industries, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
City Council President Herb Wesson says his goal is to have every person in the city in need of a computer to have one. Well, sometimes just a few little changes can make a big impact. Rasha Goel has more on how the community recently came together to make Skid Row residents a bit more comfortable.
These new colored benches are the latest additions to Gladys Park and San Julian Park in Skid Row. Those living in the area say they were much needed.
There already were park benches here, but they were kind of old and worn down, and the type of design it was, it was like, pretty hard on the buttocks, if you know what I mean, and so there's a better, better design.
While the benches had been provided, there wasn't enough funding for the installation. Thanks to community members from Skid Row, Council District 14, the Department of Recreation and Parks, the mayor's office, homeless liaison, and private partners, over 15 new benches were installed.
We're just committed to trying to enhance this community as much as we can. It's a big endeavor, especially in Skid Row, but this park is a place that is for fun and recreation and safety, and it's here as a community asset.
When they see the parking wreck is working for the benefits of the homeless community, that makes other ones to get involved.
Officials say this effort is part of bringing the community together and providing the same resources to all residents.
We want to make sure that they have the opportunity to have pride and ownership of what we do here. That way, they help us with the maintenance and the programming.
This is the first of many changes that will be seen at the park. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Other changes include refurbishing the basketball court and setting up a bathroom to replace portable toilets. While hundreds of Native-loving Californians took in a weekend of drumming and dancing as the 34th Annual American Indian Powwow kicked off at Cal State Northridge, Anna Marcos takes us there.
It was something of an equal-opportunity powwow. Everyone welcomed to try on their powwow dance moves, and it didn't seem to matter what clothes you wore or what shape you were in, what your face looked like, or what your age was.
The powwow mostly is the dancing. That's really what the powwow is, is a kind of a celebration, a kind of social gathering.
I hadn't been to a powwow in decades, so I thought, hey, I'll go check it out.
This was the Cal State Northridge 34th Annual Powwow put on by the American Indian Student Association and the school's American Indian Studies program.
We want that awareness spread out there about the American Indian culture, so having people come in, learn some things, it's always good.
My sorority sister is Native American, so this is part of our diversity event.
And the Native American-themed flyers, all hand-drawn.
You'll see on the arm, it has resilience, so that's being able to withstand cultural genocide and just genocide in general for the American Indian peoples. And then on the tail, the bushel, it says resistance.
Okay, so you've got a little symbolism in the mix. You could also get a little food and retail therapy: dream catchers, clothing, Indian art, Indian fry bread, and Indian jewelry, all up for a little bartering, a way to fire up the modern economic engine while honoring ancestral roots. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
About 300 people attended the celebration. While LAUSD students who don't have internet access at home are getting the chance to play fair on the road to success, Rasha Goel has more on how one of the largest phone companies is helping students stay connected when it comes to schoolwork.
You all are the first big school in the city of LA to get the hotspot, to have free internet service. This little gadget right here will provide you internet service for the rest of your high school years, okay?
Students at Garfield High School were the first to experience Sprint's One Million Project, which connects 9,000 Los Angeles high school students with free devices and free wireless service. This partnership with the LA Unified School District aims to help eliminate the homework gap by providing internet to those who don't have it at home.
For any student to lack the tools needed to achieve puts that student at risk. None of you are at risk now of technology because this is yet another tool in your hands provided by Sprint so that you can achieve.
Students will receive either a free smartphone, tablet, or hotspot device, and 3 gigs of high-speed LTE data per month for up to four years while they're in high school.
That will be easier for us to do our homeworks, our assignments, and keeping track with our grades.
Officials say 75% of America's high school teachers assign homework that requires getting online, yet there are 5 million families without internet connections at home.
At my house, I don't have a computer or really internet access, so I gotta wake up really early to go to the library or stay at school super late to finish my work, and it kind of, it's a real pain, especially since college apps are coming up. I feel very excited I'm getting a Chromebook and a hotspot because I don't have to stay at school so late.
This is the first year of the initiative. The goal: to connect 1 million students throughout the United States over the next five years. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Students also received a backpack, AirPods, and Chromebook from the district. New year and new marijuana laws. City officials want to make sure you know the new regulations. The first Prop HHH-funded housing development breaks ground, and how to safely recycle your Christmas tree. All these stories in City Bee. Although recreational marijuana is now legal in California, Los Angeles officials said there are still some final steps required before sales will be allowed in the city. And they also warn that the use of the drug comes with significant restrictions and rules. Cannabis regulation officials said that applications from existing medical marijuana businesses will be processed first, followed by other applications. The initial wave of shops that open for recreational sales will be doing so under a temporary license while the city fully processes their applications and does all the necessary background checks. Meanwhile, LAPD will be making sure all marijuana regulations are followed.
We'll pay close attention to the use of marijuana in a vehicle, to a person driving impaired, to the person selling or furnishing marijuana to a minor. Those are all illegal actions, and the department will take aggressive action in enforcing the law.
City officials broke ground on Phase 2 of PATH Metro Villas, the first permanent supportive housing complex financed by Proposition HHH, the voter-approved mandate that will help the city build 10,000 units of housing for Angelenos who are homeless over the next decade. The development is located in Council District 13 at 340 North Madison Avenue in LA. Prop HHH authorizes the city to issue up to $1.2 billion for the construction of permanent supportive housing and facilities. PATH Metro Villas is expected to open in the spring of 2019 and will offer 187 affordable and permanent supportive apartments and 88 interim housing beds with programs focused around health, employment, housing placement, and veteran services. Well, it's time to recycle that Christmas tree, and city leaders want to make sure you do it safely. LA Sanitation and other city leaders demonstrated how to properly recycle Christmas trees and provided important fire safety tips at the East Valley Sanitation District Yard in Sun Valley. This annual Christmas tree recycling program, which is run by LA Sanitation, recycles up to 100,000 trees annually. These trees, which otherwise would have ended up in a landfill, are turned into mulch and compost to be used by residents for gardening and city staff for landscaping. You can either cut the tree in pieces and place them into the green bin, or if your tree is too big to cut, just put it curbside next to your bin on collection day.
It's very dangerous to keep at home. We just want to make sure that the public knows where to take your Christmas tree, how to recycle it, and we're happy to take it off your hands.
For a complete list of these locations, visit lacitysan.org. The Wonder Woman of Council District 6 recently gave children a gift to enhance their super reading powers. Rasha Goel explains.
10-year-old Alina Lopez from Noble Avenue Elementary School was anything but shy when she volunteered herself to read in front of a room full of students. Reading is something that excites her and she knows will help her in the future.
I enjoy reading because reading helps me learn more about the world.
Alina was among the many kids attending Councilmember Nuri Martinez's reading event at the Panorama City Branch Library. It's the second one the councilwoman has hosted to help promote reading. This year's theme: Wonder Woman.
The one thing I just want to make sure our parents take away from this is that take advantage of the time that you have with your kids. Turn off that TV for at least an hour a day before your kids go to bed. Make sure you create that reading space for them.
Though I was a princess, I did not want to become the queen. I wanted to fight for justice and secretly enter the contest. Wouldn't she, did she want to be a princess?
No!
Not only did the kids get to read with Wonder Woman, but they also received superhero backpacks with books from Scholastic.
It's wonderful. I love it. When my Alina was in second grade, they also had it, and I brought her, you know, like I said, I've encouraged them to read a lot.
I like reading because it helps me learn.
And for some kids here, they were grateful for the opportunity to receive books.
It's a good thing you guys doing this for the people that needs the stuff because there's a lot of people that don't have the money to go buy anything in the stores.
Thanks to the Wonder Woman of this district, these kids are receiving access to a superpower that will empower them for life. In Panorama City, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Councilwoman Nuri Martinez also held a similar event at the Van Nuys and Sun Valley Public Libraries. Well, here's your chance to try some unique flavors all in one location. Enjoy a little ice skating in the valley, and if you love Motown hits, we've got just the ticket. All this and this week's Things to Do. Smorgasburg LA is open every Sunday on the five-acre site of the weekday Alameda Produce Market in downtown LA, which is part of a larger new development called Row Downtown LA. Each Sunday, find dozens of exciting food vendors at Smorgasburg LA, plus sophisticated shopping from the realms of design, craft, style, vintage, wellness, and more. Cultural events, pop-ups, and other surprises transform the Bass site into a new experience in downtown LA's burgeoning scene and a unique destination for the region. Take a bite of LA on Sunday, January 14th, 21st, and 29th. For more, visit lasmorgasburg.com. The holidays may be over, but the fun isn't. If you haven't hit the ice rink this season yet, now's your chance, so strap on those ice skates and go for a ride at the Woodland Hills Ice Rink, the San Fernando Valley's only ice rink outside LA Live. From recreational skating, exhibitions, group and private classes, to birthday parties, it's sure to entertain the whole family. For more, visit woodlandhillsice.com. It began as one-man story, became everyone's music, and is now Broadway's musical. Motown the Musical is the true American dream story of Motown founder Barry Gordy's journey from featherweight boxer to the heavyweight music mogul who launched the careers of Diana Ross, Michael Jackson, Smokey Robinson, and many more. Motown shattered barriers, shaped our lives, and made us all move to the same beat. Now experience it live onstage in the record-breaking smash hit Motown the Musical. For more, visit motownthemusical.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacitybee.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Okay, good morning. Good morning. Shhh. If everybody, if everyone would please, please take their seats. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. The public is welcome, and I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. With that said, Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bona, Buscaino, Sadio, Angler, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Coetz, Kirk, Rian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, and Wesson. Twelve members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Price and Mr. O'Farrell, next.
Very good, sir. Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Harris, Dawson moves. Mr. Weezer, seconds.
Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that items 1I, 1Q, and 1R be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid in full.
You know what, Mr. Clerk? Since we've been on recess for the holidays, why don't we begin today with a salute of our flag? I'd like to ask everybody in council to rise. We'll be led by Mr. Buscaino.
With all honor, Mr. President, place your right hands over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Sorry for that interruption, Mr. Clerk. Please continue.
The Department of Building and Safety recommends that items 1I, 1Q, and 1R be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid in full, that items 1G and 1T be received and filed in as much as the subject properties were determined to be owner-occupied single-family dwellings and thus exempt from lien processing, and lastly, that items 1J, 1O, and 1P be continued to February 9, 2018. Further, there's a request from member to continue items 3 and 4 to February 9, 2018, and lastly, item 27 to January 24th.
Okay, so ordered, continue.
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 25 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, do you have cards on these items?
Sir, we have cards on all items.
Okay, then we'll hold those. Please continue.
Very good, sir. Items 26 through 32 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, members. Okay, I've been informed we need to hold item 26, and let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Mr. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Continue.
Mr. President, items 33 through 41 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, sir. Cards on all items.
Okay, then continue.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment for items not, or for matters not on today's agenda.
Okay. All right, what we're going to do before we get into the presentations, let's vote on item 26 separately, on item 26 separately. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
What? Yes.
Okay, so it came through. So now let's go back to presentations. I'd like to recognize Mr. Blumenfield. Mr. Blumenfield, the floor is yours. Mr. Blumenfield, you have a very large crowd and a fairly tall crowd.
Yes. Yes, we do, and a very august group. What better way, folks, colleagues, to start 2018 than to declare it Ed Begley Jr. Day, our first day back in session?
Let's give him a round of applause. That's a great idea.
So it is my pleasure to welcome Ed, his wife Rachel, his daughters Hayden and Amanda, a number of their friends who you've probably seen in film and TV. We have Jeff Goldblum, Cheryl Hines, Bobby Kennedy are all here. Want to say a few words about a very special person, Ed Begley Jr. And I get to start out by saying a few things about Ed because we have been friends for actually decades now. It's been, it's been a couple, a couple over 20 years. When I first got to know Ed back 20 years ago when I worked for the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and Ed was on the board. And I was like, who is this crazy actor guy who comes, literally comes to the meeting in his bike shorts, you know, taking his, everybody else wearing a suit, and he comes in wearing his bike shorts and all sweaty to the meetings, but then really contributes to things. He's not just there as a, as an actor, celebrity. He's there as someone who really cares about the environment. He walks the walk, that he talks. I still remember that you were the first, the first time I ever drove in an EV vehicle was your vehicle that you brought to the conservancy meeting. That was the old GM vehicles that were then somehow magically disappeared, but I now drive an EV inspired by that back then. We've had the pleasure of going up to Sacramento together to lobby on different environmental bills years ago. And from him, I learned how we can really protect California better. Just a little history, he was born in Los Angeles, 1949, was inspired by his Academy winning father to become an actor who was involved in his community. A lot of us know him from his amazing work on screen. He's appeared in over 300 films, television shows, and plays. His career has spanned over 50 years, beginning in 1967 playing Marv in an episode of My Three Sons. Since then, it's come a long way since then. Since then, he brought us many memorable television performances and programs such as St. Elsewhere, Six Feet Under, and more recently, Better Call Saul, Arrested Development, Portlandia. Ed has also made audiences laugh on the big screen in films like She Devil, Transylvania 6500, Pineapple Express, not to mention the many collaborations with the great Christopher Guest, including Best in Show, A Mighty Wind, and For Your Consideration. I could go on and on about his filmography. But while he's been busy being a Hollywood legend, and a lot of people, you can, that could be your whole life, he has also done something very unique. He is a preeminent environmental leader who leads by example, has ideas on how we can change our environment, and has, has done it. And since 1970, he's driven an electric vehicle or hybrid vehicles, has found many ways to limit his energy usage by finding creative ways to convert his home into a lean, green machine. You know, he, when I say he walks the walk, he and his team, unlike probably all of us who drove here, they took public transit to get here, which is impressive. And you said it only took 29 minutes, so that's, that's pretty good.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four minutes, all right. Ed, he, he has lectured all over the country, from college classrooms to conventions. He's written books about how we can all make changes, large and small, and that make a difference in our environment and as well as our pocketbook. And when I, when I brought this up with my staff, the other thing is probably all of you have run into Ed here in Los Angeles for one reason or another. But even on my, my staff, we were just talking with Jeff, he met you in LA DOT hearing about bike lanes. Tim in my office met you about an electric car rally in the West Valley. You came to Allison, who's new, new on my staff. You came to her student group at USC called the Environmental Student Assembly. This is a guy who gets around because he cares about the environment. He gets around without, without using fossil fuels, and he cares about the environment. Ed goes where he can make a difference and inspire people wherever that may be. Last year, Ed and Rachel completed construction on their dream green home, which is a true environmental marvel. He was kind enough to share a short video with us today of his new home, showing us all of the changes we can make today. Because he, he doesn't want to waste this opportunity to be honored. He wants to make sure that he's teaching us something in the process. So as that, we have a video all queued up. If I could ask you to play the video. Here we go.
So what do we have here, Ed?
Big, thick walls. The most points you get from LEED, let me tell you what LEED is. Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. That's a rating system for how energy efficient a house is. The most points you get is from what's called the envelope of the house, how well insulated it is, how well it holds the heat in the winter and the cool in the summer. And because we have these big, thick walls, we have an incredible thermal mass. Now, it's steel. We didn't want to use trees, take down trees to build a house. We built without a steel. Now you got a challenge. You don't want that heat or cool going through that steel, which, you know, steel conducts heat or cooling very well, so you don't want that. So there's six inches of steel, two-inch thermal gap, then four inches of steel, and incredible isamine foam insulation in between. All the doors and windows are double panes, high efficiency there, and it's a great way to have a very efficient home.
Does everybody have to do a wall that thick to get this advantage that you're talking about?
No, you don't. You can do good insulation with any thickness of wall. You know, we have the resources to do walls this thick. If you're doing just two-by-fours or two-by-six, you don't have to do 12 inches thick. The average shower Jane can do that by just putting in good insulation and good double pane windows. Now, Rochelle got her dream bathroom, but it is, as you say, very green in many ways. First of all, the tile is all ocean side glass and tile, high post-consumer recycled content. Bottles from curbside pickup are in all the tiles on the floor and on the walls. Water usage, the shower head and both these faucets use very little water, much less than the normal shower head or faucet right there. And of course, we have the act-on-demand system, which has a motion detector right up there. That motion detector senses when someone's come in the room, it turns on a pump that brings hot water ready to go to that faucet or to that shower head right there, so you don't waste water waiting for it to get warm. And like we have in the laundry room, we have another sewer and landscape switch under the sink, so all this water goes from that tub, from both sinks and from the shower, down to the gray water system to irrigate the fruit orchard.
Amazing. What else is there to talk about?
Come in the basement. Let's look at some of this equipment.
All right. Here we are in the engine room, many people think of. Tell us what is going on. This is incredible.
It is like an engine room. This is what keeps the SS Begley moving, all this equipment, and it's very efficient equipment. Right down at the end there, you see that one big tank? That's a solar hot water tank. There's no flame under it, there's no electric element that heats it. It all is coming from a solar thermal panel on the roof that heats it up. So that's number one. Number two, if it's cloudy for a while, you have this highly efficient A.O. Smith 96% thermal efficiency natural gas heater. Uses some natural gas, but comes on rarely, because most of it's being done by the sun. So this boosts it if it's cloudy for a while and gets it up to a nice temperature. Come over here and you see the solar electric inverters. That takes the DC power from up on the roof. That's what solar panels are, they're DC power, and it inverts it into AC that you can use. Five kilowatts, five kilowatts. So we've got 10 kilowatts of inverter power, nine kilowatts of solar panels on the roof, so we've got some wiggle room there.
But what does it cost to you now to run this whole operation?
I designed this system to have nine kilowatts of solar and hope that would be enough for this very efficient house to run the house and charge the car. And it was, but I forgot about the pool. Rochelle wanted a pool, and there was a pool on site that we couldn't keep. Huge amount of water, weird geometric shape, so I said if we turn it into a rectangle, we can then cover it. But I forgot about the pool pump and the ozone equipment she wanted, so I do have a bit of a power bill with the pool.
Oh, uh-oh. How much?
It's $36 a month. So all under us, there's a huge tank, 10,000 gallon rainwater tank, looks like a two-man submarine, and all the downspouts lead there, and all the area drains lead there. That gives us a lot of water for irrigation. Over there, at the fruit orchard, there's a bunch of fruit trees. They get water from the gray water system that you saw in the laundry room and up in the master bath. That all goes to the gray water system out there, flows by gravity out there.
You know, this is really exciting, and, and thanks for giving us a nice tour of the day. We just hit on a couple of the key things, and I'm sure we could probably maybe go to your website.
Go to begleyliving.com. We've got a lot of tips there for everybody, so check out some of this stuff. Start small and build. That's the way I did it, starting in 1970 when I was a broken, struggling actor. So do something today.
Great, great video. And as you said in the video, even if you don't have the means, there are a lot of things that you can do in your home for very little money to make your home more energy efficient. And you can learn those things on his website and, and by the great example that he's provided to find a... to find a sustainable life. So we have a number of his friends here who want to say a few words, and we also have Councilmember Corretts, who also knows, has known Ed for a long time, wants to say a few words. So why don't I?
You know, Mr. Corretts, before you start, Ed, we want to thank you for taking us on a tour of the SS Begley. Okay, that, that, it was very interesting. But the thing that Bob said that is still just stuck in my brain is that the very first meeting that the two of you attended, that you, everyone else was in suits and you were in biker shorts. Members, I think that we should introduce a motion that requires Mr. Corretts to come to work with biker shorts and a helmet. Anyway, with that said, Mr. Corretts, the floor is yours.
No motion needed, I'm happy to do it without the motion.
Paul is game.
I, I promise sometime in the next five years before I'm done, I will do that. But no time soon though, I think.
Okay, let's have the photographers on alert.
And it's, it's been my honor to know Ed for a number of years as well. I remember him pre-EV, when he had various converted vehicles that were converted to electricity. I have to admit, I'm, I'm decades late, so now I'm driving a Bolt, but he, I don't know how many different incarnations he had. He was way ahead of all of us. Obviously, he's had an amazing acting career. Some of my favorite movies were Accidental Tourist, Pineapple Express, and Best in Show, which Mr. Wesson and I should both like. I don't know if you ever saw it, about Dog Show, and he, he played the villain, which he sometimes does, interestingly enough, for someone with a non-villain, villainous reality. But he was the hotel manager in that one, in kind of an evil position. I'm trying to remember the most obscure movie he did. I think it was Transylvania 6500, which was a parody of monster movies with Jeff Goldblum, who we are fortunate to have here with us. My favorite appearance of his was actually a guest role on Monk, which was my favorite TV series. So he's done hundreds of things, and as, as Bob noted, you would normally think of someone like that as an actor. But really, I've always thought of him as the strongest environmentalist in the city of Los Angeles. And there is nobody around that does more to actually internalize his environmental activism and every way that you get around, your own home, everything you've done is environmentally leading us in the right direction. So I've been proud to, to work with Ed on a number of things over the years. I, I saw his house, but it was a work in progress. Now that I see it there, it's, it's gotten to where I know you always wanted it to be. So it's, it's my honor to help honor you, and I look forward to continue working with you on important environmental issues as we face the, the most difficult time environmentally with at least one annoying elected official standing in our way. So we all must work together to, to try and get around that. So thank you, Ed, for everything that you've done, the joy that you've brought us as a great actor, and the incredible environmental leadership that you've provided.
And before we hear from Ed, some of his friends wanted to say a few words. So next, we're going to hear from Robert Kennedy Jr. He is an environmental advocate, professor, bestselling author, most recently served as the senior attorney for the NRDC. He currently serves as the president of the Board of Waterkeeper Alliance, which he helped found in the 1990s. Please welcome Robert F. Kennedy Jr.
Mr. Kennedy, welcome, sir. Welcome.
Thank you so much. And I'm glad to be here to honor my friend Ed. I love Ed. He's a face of the environmental movement, and he's the one thing that makes environmentalists lovable. Whenever people talk about Ed, they always say that he walks the walk, and he literally walks the walk, like he will walk someplace rather than take anything. Thirty years ago, I asked him to come to a Riverkeeper fundraiser in Garrison, New York, and he said, sure. And it was only after he got there that I learned that he had taken a train from LA to get there, which takes a long time. For the past 20 years, he's come up to our annual Waterkeepers event up in Banff, and he drives his EV all the way to Banff every year. Rochelle flies. And, but Ed drives, he has so much integrity. It's the thing that makes, I remember, I saw that, I was looking, great interest with that, at that video of his house, because I was at the old house before he had all this high-tech stuff. And you had to, in order to make toast, you had to sit on a bicycle for about 10 minutes and pump the generator. And then he had a stove in the backyard that was, it was his only stove, and it was like a bubble top of, of glass or plastic. And he said, he claimed that if you put a piece of meat in there, it would cook. But it was getting dark when I got there, and we put the veggie burgers in there, and it was maybe four hours later and they were thawed. And then we ate them. But, you know, Ed is like the Irishman who comes upon two strangers slugging it out in the street, and he says, is this a private fight, or can anybody get involved? And he's been involved in every fistfight from the Arctic to Claywood Sound to, you know, every oil pipeline. He always shows up. He's my personal hero. He understands that we're not protecting the environment for the sake of the fishes and the birds. We're protecting it for our own sake, because we recognize that nature is the infrastructure of our communities. And if we want to meet our obligation as a generation, as a civilization, as a nation, which is to create communities for our children that give them the same opportunities for dignity and enrichment and prosperity and good health, as the communities that our parents gave us, we've got to start by protecting our environmental infrastructure. And he's our leader, and I'm so happy you're recognizing his leadership today. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Next friend of Ed who wants to say a few words is someone you, I'm sure you all recognize. He has guest starred in, in films, he's starred in films such as Jurassic Park, Independence Day, The Big Chill, Life Aquatic with, with Steve Zizou, as well as the 1985, which we've been joking about, classic, Transylvania 6500 with Ed, everybody's favorite movie. So without further ado, Jeff Goldblum, would you please say a few words?
Welcome. And also, Mr. Goldblum.
Yes, sir.
Has the coolest walk, he and Denzel Washington had the coolest walks of any actor that I've ever seen. Just give him a round of applause for having a.
Coming from you, high praise indeed. High praise indeed. Thank you. Thank you. Well, speaking of any walk or anything I've ever done on film, it's all because of Ed Begley Jr. I sit at his feet, he's a great teacher, a great teacher. He's been my best friend for 30 or 40 years. He's been at every, every event of mine that you can imagine. He's a real hero for all of us. Thank you for doing this. We are so proud and better off and lucky to be on planet Earth and in Los Angeles and in this universe at this time that he shares it with us. He's a model, citizen, activist, thinker, intellectual talent and father. I'm a new father myself, and I model myself. I aspire to be everything, just a thimbleful of what, of what he is. He would be the true, real-life George Bailey from It's a Wonderful Life. We're all centrally, essentially better off. He's a real leader from the deepest DNA in him. This reminds me, I just thought of while I was standing there, a quote that I just want to read that reminds me so deeply of him. It's by George Bernard Shaw. Maybe you know it. "This is the true joy in life, being used for a purpose recognized by yourself as a mighty one, being a force of nature instead of a feverish, selfish little clod of ailments and grievances, complaining that the world will not devote itself to making you happy. I am the, I'm, I'm of the opinion that my life belongs to the whole community, and as long as I live, it's my privilege to do for it whatever I can. I want to be thoroughly used up when I die, for the harder I work, the more I live. I rejoice in life for its own sake. Life is no brief candle to me, it's a sort of splendid torch, which I've got hold of for the moment, and I want to make it burn as brightly as possible before handing it off to future generations." That reminds me of Ed in a nutshell. Ed, thank you, I love you, and thank you for letting me be a little part of this.
So without, without further ado.
I have members.
Members before I go to Ed.
I have members, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, and you're correct, Mr. Blumenfield, Corretts. This is a great way to start the new year. And Ed, you've been of great service to this city. The city's better off because of you. This planet is better off because of you. As Mr. Corretts was mentioning, his favorite movies that you've been, one of mine is, this is Spinal Tap. And I think you played a small little cameo, a former drummer of the band, and you died doing some, I think you were gardening, and the detective, a gardening accident, and the detective said, this death is better left unresolved. It was a great little scene. But you've been a great actor, it's been noted, great activist. Here, when I was the chair of the Energy and Environment Committee, you were instrumental in drumming up support for some great policies that we adopted, and I wrote some of them down. We're getting off of coal by the year 2025, and thanks for your efforts. We're expanding energy conservation programs, especially for low-income residents. We banned plastic bags, and that's still an effort that we keep defending that we did here. We pushed for more rooftop solar, and we've expanded backyard, our agriculture. You've been in the lead in all these fights here. And they're fights, they're battles, but you're willing to take off from your professional career, the work you do as an actor, come out here to the City Hall and fight these battles with us. So thank you so much. Your God sent to the city of LA and the planet. Thank you so much.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Ed, congratulations. It is, it's, it's an honor to see you honored. I have been a fan of your acting since I was in high school, and I have been an admirer of your political work for, for almost as long. I was a binge watcher before Netflix. And when I was in high school and in college, I used to use my VCR and tape St. Elsewhere, where you did an amazing job playing Victor Erlich. And I would watch four to six hours of St. Elsewhere back to back. And the same thing with Six Feet Under, as Hiram Gunderson. I should warn folks not to watch, binge-watch Six Feet Under, because it's dark enough that it can lead to clinical depression. And then, while it was a brief role as Seth Gillette, Senator Seth Gillette, the environmentalist senator on West Wing. But even more impressive than, than your acting, which I've so enjoyed, has been the incredible work you've done on the environment. When I was a, a lead staffer for Ruth Galanter back in the mid-'90s, Ed Begley was sort of the, the, the North Star of environmentalism in Los Angeles. It was a time before every elected official in Los Angeles aspired to be an environmentalist. It was before environmentalism was hip in Hollywood, and you were driving your EV, you were coming here and you were pressuring this body and others like it to take their early actions on environmentalism. And, and I think what's, what's, what's so great about you is not only did you blaze these trails and then serve as the North Star for those who followed after you as environmentalists, but you really defined what it means to not just talk and advocate for environmentalism, but live it. And you planted plenty of seeds for others to do the same, so thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfield, for bringing this forward to finally create Ed Begley Jr. Day in the city of Los Angeles. And Ed, congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. My colleagues have spoken eloquently, I think, about the contributions that you've made to the cultural fabric of this country through your body of work in television and film. We've spoken eloquently about your fierce activism and what you've done, not just here in Los Angeles, but on a national level, to really change the discussion about environmental policy. And each of those individually would be reason enough to honor you here today. But I also want to add your role as a teacher. It's been my great privilege to represent you and to be your neighbor. And I can, I can say, members, that for all of his national recognition, for all of his fame, Ed Begley has been a phenomenal member of our community and neighbor, who has, this is, the SS Begley is not the first time that his home has been a role model and example for what others can do to contribute to environmental sustainability. Been multiple homes that have done this. And each and every time, those homes have become centerpieces of the neighborhood. They've become in many ways, models for others to, to, to learn from and to emulate, even to the point that Ed has opened his homes up for field trips for elementary school students from Studio City to come and start to get a sense of what it means to make a personal contribution to the environment. Now, many of us can't build a home like the SS Begley. That may be out of reach for, for many people in Los Angeles. But each, and you saw Ed's passion in describing it, because Ed has shown us that even if we can't do that, we can each do something. Everybody can make a, a contribution. Everybody can change their home and their practice in some way that will lead to greater sustainability. And I think that has left an indelible mark, Ed, on our country, that you've changed the dialogue in our country to the point that we each understand that we can do a little bit of what you've done and will collectively make an enormous difference for doing so. So thank you for that. Thank you for all that you've done in film, in television, in advocacy, and thank you for being such a great neighbor and a member of my district.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to rise and join the chorus of admiration. The George Bernard Shaw quote is perfect. It perfectly describes who you are. For all the reasons that have been mentioned here, you're an influencer. You represent what's best in an Angeleno. You participate in the city. You love Los Angeles, and that shows in everything you do. I have had the great privilege of crossing paths with you for the last 36 years, beginning when I was waiting tables in Beverly Hills in 1982. I waited on you. To, to the time about three years ago when I presented an award to you at the Los Angeles River for your environmental work. I served in a jury pool with you about 10 years ago on some court case. So when, when someone says that Ed Begley Jr. is everywhere, it's true. He is everywhere in Los Angeles. So I, I want to thank you for your volunteerism and for, like I said, representing what's best of an Angeleno. You're, you're a great role model for all of us. So I just echo everything that's been said, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfield and Mr. Corretts, for bringing Mr. Begley Jr. and his wonderful friends to celebrate Ed Begley Jr. Day in the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Mr. Sidio.
My last?
You are the closer, sir. Yes, you are.
I have that great sense of everything that can be said, has been said, but not everyone has said it. Just diddle, Jeff Blum. I think that would be probably the, the best closure, sir. But I want to go beyond that. I want to thank you. You're here today lauded as an environmentalist, but you're much more than that. You are a man committed to social justice. Environmentalism is your expression of your commitment to social justice, but it is not your only expression. You are the epitome of leadership. You're a man of vision and a man of action, and I thank you for that. And I thank you for your friendship. I don't think there's been a campaign, an effort or initiative that I've been involved with in this community for the last 25 years, that you haven't been there with us, both as a trade unionist and in my time as in elected office, you have always been there. And I appreciate your friendship and your support. You have been a tremendous asset to the Latino community, the farmworker community, the immigrant community, always there. And I wait for the next revival of Caesar and Reuben, because that was an incredible effort, great thoughtfulness, a great imagination, and really way ahead of its time. And I look forward to its next revival and a next collaboration with it. You are a dear, dear, special man. I know your family knows that. We thank your family for sharing you with us, but I love you very much. You are a real great. You are a real great friend and a great man, and I thank you.
Mr. Blumenfield, back to you.
Well, it's a lot of buildup, a lot of pressure on you, Ed. Sorry to do that to you, but without further ado, Mr. Ed Begley Jr.
Thank you so much, Paul. Thank you all the wonderful council members who I know so well and have worked with. And Herb, thank you for taking this time. I'll be mercifully brief. Just a few minutes to thank all these people. My role right now is to not get emotional with everything I've heard and to have all these friends and loved ones here, my family. I'm so grateful for your love. My dear friends who are up here and saying these things is just extraordinary. I just want to say, there's a tendency to be down or cynical or depressed about the current state of things as regards the environment nationally. But you guys hold the line on it here every day. And now is when I got to try not to get emotional, but you lead by example, what you do, the way you've dealt with power generation, the way you've dealt with so many important issues as regards the environment, cleaning up the air. Do not lose hope. Why? Because we've done it before. I grew up in the San Fernando Valley, and in 1949, I came home from Holliday Presbyterian Hospital to home in Van Nuys, and you couldn't see the hills but like 100 days a year, maybe, maybe less than that, from the center of the valley near Sherman Way in St. Paul, but where I was raised. And not just aesthetics. You couldn't breathe. You had trouble breathing. You would, and I'm not an asthmatic, but I would have trouble catching my breath just sitting on a chair. Forget about going out and playing. It was horrible choking smog. And this council chamber and many of the leaders here have continued to fight for clean air. We have four times the cars in L.A. from 1970, millions more people, but a fraction of the smog. Give a hand to this council chamber and the people before and the Coalition for Clean Air. Martin is here from Coalition for Clean Air, and we did it with American Lung Association and Gladys Mead and what have you. And the kind of leadership we've had to clean up that air, we can do this. Bobby's shown it, Bobby Kennedy Jr. with the Hudson River, with he and John Cronin, what they did with the Hudson River Keeper, now the Waterkeeper alliances. That was a heavily polluted river. You couldn't eat the fish. Vietnam veterans came back from serving... I got to try not to get emotional. And they couldn't earn a living, which was fishing. And they set about cleaning up. It's one of the most productive fisheries in the Northeast because of what you did and what John Cronin did. And pardon me. And so we can do that. We can, there's so much that we can do today, and it's not all highfalutin stuff like you saw in that home. I'm wonderful that I got that home. I have to thank my wife, Rachelle, for leading me to do that. I was very happy in a home I lived in for 26 years, a very modest home, a two-bedroom home, but it didn't have enough closet space, okay? And we were sharing a bathroom with a teenager. There was a motivation to move from everybody, okay? So we moved. The bills going to a larger home, that very fancy home you saw, did not go up, they went down. Lower energy use, lower natural gas use, lower water use, lower electric use. It all went down. So less is more. That's the way I've led my whole life, and sometimes more can be less. So again, there's simple things everybody can do. They can take public transportation, as I did today to get here. You can ride a bike when weather and fitness permit. You can put up weather stripping or energy-saving thermostats, energy-saving light bulbs, and stuff that are affordable that we need to emphasize every day, so everybody's involved in this. I got to thank Osama Yunan, who's here. Osama, are you here from the city? A wonderful guy back there, Osama, who worked with Matt.
Give him a round of applause.
For Osama. To get all this green stuff implemented was a challenge. All the rules are there in place to help, and you guys have passed wonderful laws to help the nuts and bolts of getting it done, the wonderful vision of this city. You have someone like Osama to guide you through this stuff, so you can do a gray water system and have it permitted, to have rainwater, a 10,000-gallon tank and have it permitted. Everything was permitted and done properly, up to code, so it'll last a lifetime. I'll close by thanking my wife for her wonderful guidance and love over the many years. My daughters, Amanda and Hayden, who are green leaders beyond anything I could ever do, my friend Jeff Goldblum, Bobby Kennedy Jr. and Cheryl Hines, James Jeremiahus, who's here, Omadi is here. Who am I forgetting?
Omadi's taping it.
Omadi, who's here. Omadi is here. Omadi's down there getting pictures. And thank you to this council chamber. Don't give up the fight. We will hold the line against some of the problems we're seeing nationally and globally. You've been doing it for decades and decades. It works. The air is cleaner, not dirty from 1970. Keep it up. I'm proud to be with you. Thank you.
Ed Begley Day. As Bob and his crew go to the media room, Mr. Price for an intro.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's colleagues and honors. We are welcoming the L.A. Art Show to our city. This is an exciting event that's kicking off this week. The L.A. Art Show is L.A.'s premier event for experiencing, collecting, sharing, and purchasing art. This year's show is going to feature an international list of exhibitors with more than 100 galleries from 18 countries and an exciting roster of new exhibitions and programs curated by major, local, and international museums and art organizations. Tonight is opening night through Sunday, the 14th. We're joined today by the president and CEO, Scott Damit. Scott, why don't you stand up, throw your hands in the air? And colleagues, let's give the L.A. Art Show a grand welcome. They are an exciting resource to our community, and we are proud to welcome them again. The 23rd year, going strong. Let's give it up.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Krikorian, are you ready? Okay, Mr. Krikorian, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And colleagues, it's a bittersweet honor to come before you and recognize the long and faithful career of service of Tom Moutis, the General Manager of Lasers. This has been a tremendous story of service that Tom has had throughout his career, and as he enters into retirement now, we're certainly going to miss the critically important role that he plays, leading the, one of the largest retirement funds in the country. Tom started with the city as, he's a lifelong Angelino. He got his training and his education in the valley at Cal State Northridge, getting a Bachelor's of Science in Business Administration and then a Master's of Public Administration. And then he embarked on a long career of service to this city, beginning as a messenger clerk at the North Hollywood Regional Library in 1983. From that position, he's gone on to work with the Police Department, Personnel Department, the Department of Telecommunications, and the Office of the City Clerk before joining at Lasers about a decade and a half ago. At Lasers, he served as the Chief Management Analyst, heading the Retirement Services Division and the Administrative Services Division, prior to becoming Assistant GM, and then ultimately General Manager in 2010. So as General Manager of Lasers, Tom has the unbelievable challenge of managing a fund of over $15 billion. Think of that, $15 billion. Our general fund is about $5 billion. So this is a massive undertaking and a massive responsibility upon which 24,000 active Lasers members and 18,000 retirees and their beneficiaries depend for their welfare, for their quality of life, for their comfort and security in retirement. And it's more than that, because the stability and success of our retirement fund is what allows us to recruit employees fresh out of school who want to come to work for the city of Los Angeles, in large part because they know that our pension funds are well-managed and will provide them with a secure retirement. Tom's worked tirelessly to ensure the department's success. He spearheaded the implementation of a new pension administration computer system. He helped to ensure that retirement benefits promised to tens of thousands of city employees were well-funded and well-administered and in a cost-effective way. He's continued to work throughout the years to try to reduce fees, to try to increase investment returns, all of which benefits all of us by reducing the commitment of the need for the general fund to be able to make up the difference. Tom's been lauded for his sound financial decisions and the well-funded status of the plan. And as we've come out of the Great Recession and the collapse of the stock market and the global economy, Tom had the responsibility of trying to rebuild the fund and get it back on track, which he has done. In 2011, for example, Lasers had a return on investment of over 20%. Last year, in 2017, the return was over 13%, higher than many of the other public pension funds throughout the United States and nearly twice as high as the assumed rate of return. So in year after year, we've been able to count on Tom's leadership in making sure that the pension funds in Lasers were well-invested and producing good, solid rates of return, which helps every member of the city of Los Angeles, not just our employees and retirees. Tom also helped oversee much of the pension reform that we've engaged in over the last several years. We initiated a Tier Three, which was seamlessly rolled out without any hiccups, and that was, again, not an easy task. But to Tom, overseeing the city's civilian pension fund has never been just about dollars and cents. It's always been about ensuring the financial stability of the fund and ensuring the promise of retirement security for the employees who've dedicated themselves, as he has throughout a career in service to the people of Los Angeles. Tom's career was molded in that spirit, and it will be his enduring legacy, and also the security of so many of our other employees will be his enduring legacy. His consistent passion, loyalty, and enthusiasm to serve the residents of Los Angeles and to protect the retirement benefits of our employees has been just a phenomenal achievement, even in some of the most challenging and worst of times that this city has faced. So Tom, we're deeply grateful for your dedication, your perseverance, your intelligence, your professionalism, your hard work. And I must say personally, since as Budget Chair, I'm constantly grinding on Tom to try to consider an assumed rate of return, for example, more consistent with the actual returns that he's realized. He doesn't always agree with me, and he acts independently, and the board acts independently of this council, but he's always been willing to listen to my arguments and to take seriously the concerns that I've expressed. And although we have, he has no obligation to, he's always been willing to do that, and I've appreciated that very much. So it's my great pleasure to congratulate Tom Moutis on his great career of service. And before we bring him up, Mr. President, I'd like to invite Jamie Lee, the Lasers' Board President, to say a few words as well. So please join me in welcoming her.
Good morning. Thank you very much for having me here today. Thank you, Mr. Krikorian, for that introduction.
Just go right ahead.
I am very pleased and honored to be here this morning to recognize the career of Tom Moutis, who is retiring today as General Manager of the L.A. City Employees Retirement System. As Mr. Krikorian stated, Tom has been faithfully and ardently serving the city of Los Angeles since before I was born. And I only say that because he does not at all look it. He must have started when he was five. But he has been an exceptional role model for me to show that passion and hard work can carry you through a long and storied career. He has been with Lasers for the last 17 years and is General Manager for the last seven. I joined the Lasers Board in March of 2014, and I became President of the Board in July of that year. Since then, I have had weekly phone calls and meetings with Tom, covering an enormous array of topics from financial issues, personnel issues, whether internal, external, or with the Board, on budget and finance, and any number of issues that come before us. He has handled all of these issues with incredible dignity, intelligence, sound advice. I've come to rely on him greatly over all of this time to help us make decisions, to help set our agendas, and to help move our plan forward. He's also trained all of us. When we come on as commissioners for this Board, we really feel that the most important things that we need to learn are in benefits administration and institutional investing. Tom is an expert far, far beyond what his position calls for in both of these fields as GM. So he has trained us, but what I've come to learn, most importantly, is the training that we have received as fiduciaries of this plan, of the need to make independent decisions for the health and security of our now $17 billion fund. He sets the bar exceptionally high. I have never questioned his integrity, his honesty, and his commitment to Lasers. That has helped all of us in our decision-making process. He sets that tone for the entire department, and it carries through to this day. That will be one of his greatest legacies. And so for that, I am eternally grateful for his service to the Board, to the city of Los Angeles, and to the members, active and retired, and their beneficiaries of Lasers. Thank you very much, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you. Members, it's my privilege to be able to present to you, and I hope you'll join me in thanking the General, the last day of service of the General Manager of Lasers, Tom Moutis.
Hey, Tom, before you start, I just want to say that, look at how far you've come. You know, where you started, and now you're saying goodbye to all of us. But I just wanted, Mr. Krikorian, to take a moment to put extra emphasis on the challenge of the job that you have done for so many years. The responsibility, so many lives and futures depend on your action and the commissioners that you work with. It is a job that will have ramifications long after you're gone, and people need to know that, and people need to know that you were the best at it. And even though many of us would gripe at you from time to time subtly and maybe not so subtly, you always maintained your calm and cool, and you got the job done. So on behalf of every employee, the city of Los Angeles, I want to thank you, and I want to ask everybody to give him another round of applause for a job well done.
Thank you, President Wesson. Also, thank you very much, Councilmember Krikorian and Board President Lee, for your incredibly kind words. When I was trying to figure out what to say today, the word that kept coming to mind was gratitude. And I've been very fortunate to work with Board President Lee now for several years, and she's been a wonderful Board President to work with, and so I'm very grateful for that. I'm very grateful for my wonderful and supportive family that's here with me today, my wife, Trina Unzeker, daughter Jenna, son Ethan, and daughter Gianna. They're always just great and supportive of everything that I do, including my work at Lasers. To my staff that took time away from their very important implementation of our new pension administration system. You've just made the last 16, 17 years fly by. You do great work. It's not always seen by the public, but it's very important work, as has been pointed out here, that I can't take the credit for, because it's the staff behind me that has done such an incredible job, whether it was retiring five years' worth of retirees, 2,400 people in an eight-month period when the city had to part company with some of its employees, or more recently, the computer system that we're implementing that's really going to change the way that we provide service to our members. It's going to be a very transformational computer system. So can't say enough about the wonderful people and the gratitude I have for the folks that have worked with me over the years at Lasers. And lastly, thank you, City Council. This is a great way to wrap up a messenger clerk to general manager career with this resolution today, and I'm very grateful to you, and I wish you all the best. Thanks again.
No, thank you.
And so, Tom, on behalf of all of my colleagues on the council, as well as the mayor, and as well as every active and retired employee of the city of Los Angeles who depends so much on the work that you've done, I'd like to present you with this resolution and our deep and sincere thanks for your great career. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to our multi-comment. I want to call up Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, you have 1A, 33, A, B, and C, D, and E, and general public comment. So, Mr. John Walsh. Mr. Walsh, the floor is yours.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, building and safety, nuisance abatement. You do a pretty good job on that. I'm not one of these white guys who say, "This city's gone to hell since the Negroes run it." I'm not one of those people. You'll see them up here, but that's not me. As far as number one, and I'll skip right to public comment.
Can we give him his general public comment?
General public comment. Ed Begley Jr. is adopted. That's not his real name. He didn't mention his other parents, his natural parents, and they're gone. And if I'm wrong, just stop me and destroy my credibility. Destroy my credibility, and you have never, never stopped me on a fact that I brought up. And as far as Ed Begley Jr. is concerned, we understand that he is about, pretty close to endorsing Garcetti as the next President of the United States. It was quid pro quo. He got this thing where all you did was get down on your knees, and now I'm tired of all this orgy of self-congratulation.
Mr. Previn, are you still? I see Mr. Previn. Okay, you have 1G, 1H, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, and I believe 40. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, CD2. Happy New Year. It's nice to be back. Couple of factual inaccuracies. I was trying to bring to the attention of Coretta's office, but he was obviously busy with the presentation, and his guise, "Mr. Hirsch does not want to talk to the public," that's a quote, but the concern is that in the Declaration of Emergency item, for Item 36, which is the Skirball Fire, the acreage is inaccurate. It refers to a 6,500-acre fire, Mr. Bonin. As you know, it was a 475 or 485-acre fire. So, this I would describe as embarrassing, since the Mayor is making a declaration with the wrong information. I tried diligently for over a quarter hour to bring it to someone's attention to try to have a little posting happen. Didn't happen. Maybe I'm wrong. If someone wants to stand up and say, "It's 10 times as large a fire," that would be consistent with the mistruths that have been circulated about that fire that we can talk about in my general public comment. But I wanted to bring to your attention, sir, because it's important. It's important that it be accurate. La Tuna Fire was accurate, I think, and the other fire was accurate. It's a tragedy when these things happen, and it's a tragedy when the Fire Department tries to do their best and makes a finding, or preliminary finding, and they're always preliminary, but the problem is when they make those preliminary findings and the media announces and runs around the world saying that it was a homeless encampment fire, what we do is we bring on a whole lot of negative feelings to people who are experiencing homelessness. And it's my contention that there's enough negative feelings for people who are experiencing homelessness, Mr. Faubel, so I'm hoping that they will, in the future, be more responsive when the public tries to bring forward what's going on there. Now, and I don't believe it was started that way. There's absolutely no evidence. The Mayor has a propane stove, just like the rest of us, but that was not what happened. And the L.A. Times, who we do rely on for a lot of accurate reporting, may have, I don't know what happened. You could ask them. Item 39 is Englander is obviously shuffling money to the sanitation group out in his district. It's an odd time to do that, since waste management is being dragged into the media, as are the other franchisees who were selected for charging sometimes like $800 and something dollars, where previously it was $300 and change. So, we know we want it to be green, but this reminds me a little bit of Mike Fure, rolling out into the media with his brilliant lawsuit against three bad actors, which is welcomed, but what about the other contractors who are hiring truckers down in the port? Is Buscagno here today, or is he still on holiday? But the point is, those guys are getting hammered, and we all know it, and it's disgusting. And the people on the end of the consumer chain, all the people in America who benefit from stuff coming through our ports, should pay for the cost of making everything green, not those workers who are making barely minimum wage. 37, Englander is taking $150,000. He gave it to the cadets when that seemed like a nice thing to do. Now, he shuffled it back and giving it to Solid, which is the, you know, group out in Devonshire who work with law enforcement.
Let's give him his one minute. Go ahead, sir.
Don't beg me. I'll give it to you. One minute on Motorola. Motorola is a great company. They've been installed for many, many years. Problem is, they don't work so good with the fair and legal competitive bidding stuff, and the way they do it is they get a helper, like Mitch Englander, to get them all to line up, including Ted Ross from ITA, the guy who believes that I'm being shown in the same frame that Ed Begley Jr. was being shown in, or he's willing to choke it down because it's a tough place to work, is what he said. You ought to make these images fair and equitable, like the rest of the public, and like the people who come down here to be honored, and the people who come down here to give information. Everybody should be the same. It's a public hall. It's appalling what's been going on down here, and it's going to come to an end. But Motorola, their little scam, was they cited an RFP that was done at the county, but I've looked at that RFB, actually, Request for Bids, and that thing, boy, I'll tell you, that smells to high heaven. We're going to look more closely at it, but we can't go around giving away the public money.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Ms. McAllister, you have your general public comment, which you do at the end, Items 1F, 33A, and 38. The time is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy New Year. 33, I'll start here. Here you have properties that you've taken off of the escrow program, so these homes will not be foreclosed on. We don't have enough. We have nine of them, but yearly, you do maybe 1,000, so we want to see more homes saved, because if you drive around this city, all you see are tents and people homeless, and the shelters are packed. It's really bad. Excuse me. Number 38, here, Huzar and Harrison, they want $34 million to provide financing for 100-unit scattered multifamily housing at 5197th Street, so that's down the street, and 647 South San Pedro. Now, as I said earlier, there are 713,000 K-12 students in Los Angeles, the Los Angeles Unified School District. Of that amount, 500,000 or so are illegal alien children. Okay, that's 80 percent. That means if I bring 100 students in this room, 80 will be illegal. Take those 100 out, bring another 100, 80 will be illegal. These are the people living in affordable housing, and people ask me, "Well, how did they get in affordable housing?" Los Angeles has a policy where people can break across the border today and go apply for affordable housing and get it. Their citizenship is never questioned. We have enough affordable housing. You've got the illegals in there. And someone emailed me recently, I don't know if it was government official or who, and they said, "Well, why is this happening?" I said, "It's simple. It's about money. I think you guys are taking kickbacks. You're making money like never before, and you're selling this, not just Los Angeles, California. Politicians around this nation are selling this country to foreigners, and you're allowing these illegals to come in here and you're protecting them? You wouldn't be protecting them because you love them. You don't love us. We're citizens. You love them because you're getting kickbacks. You're getting cash kickbacks." And I've been hearing that they're going to start arresting you, and I want to be around to see when they come in and start getting you. Okay? Because this is wrong. This is wrong. You've got all of these illegal kids. Now, when you drive around, who's working? Construction, all these banks and everything, they're illegals' parents. The parents got the job, and the kids have the housing. I'm still on that.
Would you move on to 1F? No, no, no. It's one minute per, so you need to move on to 1F.
I did one, and I did the other.
No, but now you go on 1F.
Excuse me, I'm not done, sir. Don't cut it, y'all.
Now, Ms. McAllister, hold her time. You get, I know, and you'd get a minute for each. Ms. McAllister, just go on 1F. You got, you, no, go ahead. I stopped it for you, but now you have to move to 1F. Go ahead.
1F?
Yes, ma'am.
That's the housing that's on the foreclosure list. You're still using usury. You're charging them 250 percent penalties. I saw a property, all he needed to do was charge, he was charged $550. When you got through penalizing him at 250 percent, he was charged $2,500. You are taking people's homes, and who are you putting in there? The illegal aliens. So, you're not fooling me. I know what's going on. Now, let's...
Give her her one minute for general.
Okay, now...
Go ahead.
To determine who lives in your city, all you have to do is contact the school system. You ask the school system, "Give me the racial breakdown of the students," and LAUSD has done that on their website. Anybody can find it. You go to fingertips. It's under LAUSD's website, and that's where they'll show you that all of these students, 80 percent, are illegal. They are Hispanic, Latino, and Asians, and Asians are the second-largest illegal alien population in this city. Now, guess what? It's just not in Los Angeles. I have checked all counties throughout California. It is throughout California these illegals are in our schools, and their parents have the job. You know what that means? And the media's not going to publish this. The State of California has been invaded. If you try to put them out, we're going to have a war. Who you think started these fires? Who you think started the fire? They're just letting you know. If you try to put them out of this country, we're going into another world war.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Herman. See, I believe, yeah, Mr. Herman, 1, 2, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, all the way to 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, then we go to 33, A to 33E, and 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 40, and 41, and also 39. Okay, Mr. Herman, your three minutes.
Fellow Americans, wasn't it nice to hear that Ms. McAllister has discovered a problem? I too have discovered a problem on Item 37 in regards to CD12, why Englander relative amending council's action to reallocate funds. Now, whether or not he's stealing, I'm not surprised, and the city attorney must communicate with the Department of the FBI, who's been on Wi-Fi recently investigating allegations of corruption, embezzlement, and lies. Now, first of all, we know that the fifth-place loser is a liar.
Stay on topic.
Then I go on to Item 38, a sexual misconduct of Jose Wezar, but that's not the item. The item deals with Physical Responsibility Act, in which nature, not sexual harassment...
You're not on the item.
...but rather on the source and purpose stated, an original action in which you, as a local official, has disgracefully lied to the public. How have you lied? You subjected the approval of the city attorney, that rookie up there, who looks like the Keebler Man, to continue to lie on behalf of public interest, a violation of the Brown Act, unconstitutional violation...
Okay, you're not on the item, Mr. Herman, so let's go to his general public comment. You were warned three times. Give him his general public comment.
So, now for the record, in Van Nuys at 15004 Oxnard Street, zip code 91411, PPRP number 17/0037, LAPD, I'm talking about you, LAPD. I'm talking about you rookies. Why are policemen still having sex with children? Why is number 96824 Permit Commission dealing with the Spearmint Rhino in Oxnard, California, aka Indian Restaurant, doing business where clients are being fucked on chairs called lap dances? Now, inappropriately, it sounds horrible, but you take the consideration of what's happening in America. Jose Wezar and Englander must step down. Jose Wezar must resign for his sexual misconduct and sexual harassment, Herb.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Thank you. So, now I want to call forward Mr. Spindler. Mr. Spindler, you have Items 1A all the way through 1T, and then you have 2, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25. Then you have 33, A, B, C, D, and E, F, G, H, all the way to I. You have 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, and 41. Go ahead, Mr. Spindler.
So, we begin the new year with the train wreck of liens. Liens, Marquisie Harris Dawson taking homes away on 1A. Homes on 1B. Look what he's doing. He's killing his populace in West CD8 again, and West 69th Street, another house repossessed by the Jew bankers. CD8 at 2,500 West Burn, and another house taken by the Jews, throwing African-Americans out of their homes. And then CD9, the atrocious pegamy continues in 1H. The $2,500 lien, another one on East Adams. CD9 on East Adams, where Herb Wilson claimed he lived and never lived. Please forgive those liens. Please stop now. Then you have these fucking ordinances for these improvement districts. Nothing's improving. 4 and 5. Look at this shit. And then you have balloting, where they mail you something you never get called a street lighting ballot. Look at this shit at CD8 again. Marquisie Harris Dawson on number 9 owning slaves in CD8. Look at the money he's collecting from these poor people. It's got to stop. What would MLK do if he were to see Marquisie doing this to his people? Number 12, attacking the Jews. The Jews in CD3 being attacked with more money on their property taxes. This is horrible. But the good news, the rent escrow program, we have people graduating from the rent escrow program. Look how good that is. And then, of course, our city attorney, the criminals, continue with this agenda. Did you know that they're going to borrow a half a billion dollars, and they're not even going to let me speak on it? Did you know that? Did you know that they're going to borrow a half a billion dollars and nobody can talk about it at this phony fucking meeting?
Let's just get on the item, Mr. Spindler, please.
Did you know that? No, you didn't know that. Now you know that, and the reason why you know it is because I'm here on all these items for one reason, because in February 2017, you wouldn't settle my case, so I have to live here.
Okay, now, let's give him his one minute. It's your last warning, Mr. Spindler.
I don't have a job because of Herman Jason Wesson. I don't have an ability to work because of the slave owners. That's why. So, let's start off 2018 right, dedicating everything that we should to the CD6. No, he got a big old butt.
No, no, no. Mr. Spindler, that has nothing to do with any work that the council does. His time is over. His time is over. Mr. Spindler, return to your seat. Okay. Now you're disrupting the meeting. You're disrupting the meeting. Okay, let's, Sergeants, would you remove, Sergeants, remove Mr. Herman and Mr. Spindler for disrupting the council? Sergeants, remove Mr. Herman and Mr. Spindler for disrupting the council.
And they're continuing their usual disruption as they slowly move out. And they're still shouting.
They're still disrupting this meeting.
And in case the mics aren't picking it up, they are shouting from the back of the room as they slowly leave, preventing our, conducting our business.
Leave the... Sergeants, uh, help him leave.
And Mr. Spindler is obviously not walking out quickly at all. He stopped at one point, just for the record. And...
All right. Okay, do we, have a Mr. Ira? William? Is there William? Okay, let's move on. You, Mr. Ira? No, wait till I call you then. Give me some of the general, uh, public comments. Okay, let me get Brian Barajas, Tim Berry, Rafael Rubelito, and Gary Garcia, please come forward. You guys can all come. Mr., uh, Barajas here first. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, I turned in, uh, two pamphlets. Uh, one is on the coup against Donald Trump. Robert Mueller is a, is an amoral legal assassin. He will do his job if you let him, which thoroughly goes through the history of Mueller jailing Lyndon LaRouche. Uh, the other pamphlet is for an economic recovery entitled, LaRouche's Forelaws: The Physical Economic Principles for the Recovery of the United States. America's Future on the New Silk Road. Uh, recently, the president of France, Emmanuel Macron, visited China. And his statement is very clear to the world that the only way out and into a productive powers of labor, you go into the phase shift of LaRouche's ideas of building the world on the principles of humanity. I have turned in these two pamphlets. Anybody wants to eradicate the British Empire, let's do it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward. Identify yourself. Yes, sir. You are?
My name's Tim Berry. And I've lived in San Pedro for 30 years. I've been working at Spirit Cruises for 28 years. And, uh, many of my friends, families, and, uh, regular customers share their concerns about Spirit Cruises and Portugal Restaurant closing, uh, due to the redevelopment down there. It's confusing to me, uh, in many public comments and statements. And the EIR requirements has been stated that construction would be completed in phases, uh, which guaranteed existing businesses' tenancy during the development and into the new development or the new project. Portugal is iconic. The Spirit Fleet has been host for years to mayors, council members, their families, other officials who want to show off the port. Been doing it for years. A lot of people have created a lot of memories there. I've been proud to be part of it, but it's, looks like it's going away. Please help us, help these businesses.
Thank you. Okay, and next speaker, and before, uh, the next speaker, uh, does address us, if we could vote on items 5 through 13. Items 5 through 13. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Rafael Rubelito. I'm here to say thank you to my friend Tim. We've been working, I'm working on Fiesta Harbor Cruises for over 12 years. I've been living in the city of San Pedro for over 20, 25 years. And it's really sad to see that it's about to close down. They were telling us on meetings that we're gonna work with us, with all the tenants, so we don't lose our jobs. And now it looks like it's gonna close down. Portugal Restaurant and the Fiesta Harbor Cruises, also Spirit Cruises. This is a place where I provide for my family. Then a lot of the people is gonna lose their jobs. And it's really sad because a lot of people that comes from high schools, they have their first jobs as the summertime. And if this is gonna happen, all these people is gonna lose their jobs. The kids are gonna lose their place for summertime. And we're really looking forward for you guys to help us to save, because this is a historic place for San Pedro.
Thank you. Okay, and if I could get the next speaker. And, and before you speak, sir, I'm looking for Karina Godino, uh, Jennifer Castellone, Ernest Martinez. And before he starts, members, uh, let's vote on items 14 through 25. 14 through 25. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Gary Garcia. I've been living in San Pedro over 40 years. I worked at Fiesta Harbor Cruises over 24 years. In 2016, the Port of A held a public meeting with the developer at the Mortar Grand Theater to talk about redevelopment at Portugal. One developer named Eric Johnson verbally stated, "We are fortunate to have existing success tenants who were, I'm counting to be backbone to our pre-leasing activities." It is a huge disappointment to hear so many public comments that made us hopeful and a new change and a new chance. Please help us save Fiesta, even the rest of the Portugal Village. And please help me save my job and everybody else's. Thank you.
Yes, identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Karina Godino, and I lived in San Pedro for about six years. I worked at Portugal Restaurant for four. This place is family-owned. It's a beautiful landmark, and it has a lot of meaning, not just for us, but for everyone else. Um, in 2009, this proj, this project was approved by the EIR, where, where it was said that the Portugal Village was going to be remodeled in three different phases. And where also was said that we're going to be part of Phase 2, meaning that we weren't gonna be touched till 2019. Now they're saying that they're gonna demolish the whole place and just leave the fish market. Portugal is a big deal. It's a very familiar to all the locals. Um, this, calling this is gonna be losing my job and, uh, my father's job. Not just my, my father's. He's been working there for about 10 years, and he's our main provider. So please help us not lose our job and not lose Portugal. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Hello, good, good morning or afternoon. My name is Sharon. I work at Portugal Restaurant. I just wanna begin by stating how confused every, me, as well as a lot of people in the San Pedro community are with what is going on with the Portugal Village. As Karina had stated, you guys had said that Portugal Village would not be touched till Phase 2, which was to begin 2019. And now you're telling us that we're to be demolished by 2018. All I wanna know is, I know that a lot of you have been to our Portugal Restaurant. I work as a catering associate there, and many of you have been there for either fun or meetings. And many of you have seen that a lot of people have come to join us to either get married, to either celebrate their loved ones, and even to mourn a lot of their loved ones. And now you're planning to take this away from us, and not just from us, from a lot of people here in San Pedro. So we wanna ask that you please save us, because this is a national landmark to a lot of people here in San Pedro. So please reconsider your plans and please save Portugal Restaurant. Thank you.
Next.
Hello, my name is Ernest Martinez. I am an employee at, at Portugal Restaurant. Um, a lot of what everybody is saying, yes, I wanna save my job. And there's a lot of, my brother got married, his reception was at this restaurant. Um, the whole Portugal Village is spoken and highly known around the world. I am lucky to work on, um, on Sunday brunch, and I've talked to people on Sunday brunch. And I had this one lady come in from China, and she planned her trip around our brunch. And when she, when I was talking to her and she told me this, I was floored. I was like, this is something that you cannot replace. This is something you cannot, um, just, it happens. I, I've talked to people, and they come from all over the place, from outside of Palm Springs, everywhere. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm just here to say to you, please help us save our job and keep Portugal Village in working order.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Derek Fogle, Maria Corillo, John Garcia, Cynthia Yam. And as they're coming forward, Madam Clerk, let's vote on items 33, 34, 35, 37, 38, 39, 40, and 41. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Derek Fogle. Good morning, everybody. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. I've worked at, uh, Portugal since I moved to Los Angeles five years ago. Portugal and Spirit Cruises is family-run, and the Wilson family are some of the greatest people I've ever met. They care about their employees more than any other business I've worked for. One gentleman that I work with has been there since 1973, and that's crazy. Uh, God bless him. He supports his two daughters and bedridden wife with his, with only his income, and he's one of the sweetest people I know. He is just one example of some of the employees who have been there for years and who would have a hard time finding work outside of Portugal, because it's all that they know. I feel like I'm family, and I know customers feel the same way. I had a couple come in last Wednesday with their daughter and son-in-law, who both had their weddings at Portugal, and would, and would be very distraught if the restaurant wasn't there. San Pedro is almost like a time capsule. It's one of the few places in LA where you can get away from the city life.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next. Is that Ms. Corillo?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I've lived in San Pedro my whole life.
Speaking to the mic, man.
Oh, sorry. Uh, I've lived in San Pedro my whole life. I've worked at Portugal Waterfront Dining for five years. Uh, Spirit Cruises and the restaurant are in large part the backbone of Portugal. People from all over the world come to see us. On March 2nd, 2016, the Port of Los Angeles held a public meeting with the department, with the developers and the San Pedro Warner Grand Theater to discuss the San Pedro development. Eric Johnson, one of the developers, verbally stated during the meeting, "So that current tenants who will remain in the project will be able to stay open throughout construction. We expect to complete this phase, the first phase, by May 2019." Um, Portugal was my first job. It's helped me grow. I've learned so much from there. People do come from all over, and they, he, they, there's so much community, so much attachment to the place. Please help us save it.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is John Garcia. I have been working for Portugal Restaurant for about four years. In that time, I have picked up many skills, skills that I probably would not have been able to obtain elsewhere. Four years ago, when I started looking for work, I had a hard time finding a job because of my lack of experience. However, Portugal gave me the opportunity to prove myself as a banquet server, and I will be forever grateful. P, uh, Portugal Restaurant is so much more than just a job to me. With all my colleagues I've gotten to know over the years, it has started to feel more and more like a family. With that said, without my Portugal family, I would not be, I would be dependent on my actual family. Because just like most of my coworkers, Portugal is all we have. If the restaurant closes, we will not be able to support our families or ourselves. Furthermore, it is, it is not just families of the employees that will be affected. Families that come to celebrate birthdays, weddings, or just life. Families. Thank you.
Thank you. And as our next speaker comes forward, if I could get Lucrecia, Ricardo Gomez, Guadalupe Gomez, John Osley, and Jacob Costa. Ye, yes, ma'am.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Cynthia Yam. I'm here with the Portugal Restaurant. Um, I've been working at Portugal for a year now. Um, I started working my freshman year of college. This is my first job. Um, I'm very grateful that I have this opportunity to work with the people I work with. I've made so many friends that have turned into family. And, um, I know that you could never get an experience, um, like you do at Portugal, like, say, at a cheesecake factory. Um, we treat people like family, and, um, it's just an experience like no other. The, like they're saying, this landmark is very historic. It is beautiful. It takes my breath away every time I go there, and I am in awe every moment that I work there. So please help us save our restaurant. Thank you so much. You have a good one.
Thank you. If I could get Adriana Barbosa, next. Now, come on. If Ms. Barbosa, if you'd go, come get in line. Yes, ma'am.
Bueno dias a todos.
One moment. One moment.
Mi nombre, mi nombre es Lucrecia Uc.
My name is Lucrecia... Uc?
Uc.
Uc.
Uc. Uh, este, mi, mi trabajo de en Portugal es para mantenimiento.
My, my job at Portugal is to maintain, to do maintenance.
Ah, y me gustaría que por favor hagan algo para que no pierda mi trabajo.
I would like for you guys to do something so I don't lose my job, because...
Tengo 22 años trabajando.
I'm working there for 22 years.
Y allá ha trabajado mis hijos, ahorita mis nietas.
And my children and my granddaughters are working there as well.
Y, y no me gustaría perder mi trabajo, y que no, no me gusta que se cierre ya...
And I wouldn't like to lose my job, and I would not like to see this restaurant closing.
Allá estar la mitad de mi vida.
Half of my life is there as well.
Y mi segunda familia.
Oh, my second family.
Gracias.
Thank you so much.
Por favor, hagan algo para que no se cierre.
Please do something so we don't lose this restaurant.
Next speaker.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Ricardo Gomez.
Good morning, my name is Ricardo Gomez.
Tengo cinco años trabajando en la compañía Portugal Restaurant.
I have five years working at the company Portugal Restaurant.
Y estamos muy apenados por la situación por la que estamos pasando, por...
And we're very sad, because we're going through this situation that they're closing the restaurant.
Y nos vamos a quedar sin trabajo porque...
We're gonna lose our job, because...
Nos tenían un proyecto planeado y nos dejaron mal.
Because they pla, they had a project, but they did not abide by that.
Y estamos muy preocupados y asustados por la nuestra pérdida de trabajo.
We're very afraid, we're very scared that we're losing our jobs.
Son nuestros ingresos y...
That's our incomes.
No somos ni cinco ni diez familias, somos más de 100 familias que nos vamos a quedar sin trabajo.
It's not five or 10 families. It's more than 100 families that are gonna lose, uh, their jobs.
Y por favor necesitamos que nos consideren y que nos ayuden en este proyecto.
Please, we need, uh, your help to consider and reconsider this project, please.
Y muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Next.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Guadalupe Gomez.
Good morning, my name is Guadalupe Gomez.
Uh, tengo 10 años trabajando en el Portugal Restaurant y Borgoalca Cafe.
I am working, uh, for 10 years in, uh, Portugal Restaurant and Borgoalca Cafe.
Ah, igual que todos mis compañeros estamos muy preocupados por la pérdida de nuestros empleos.
Like, all my, uh, colleagues were very concerned for the loss of my, our employment.
Ah, sabemos que este proyecto tenía mucho tiempo.
We know that this project has been going on for a while.
Pero se nos había prometido reubicarnos para no perder nuestro trabajo mientras la construcción estaba.
But they have promised us to be relocated to another location while the construction was going on.
Ahora todo ha cambiado y es una preocupación porque como dice mi compañero somos más de 100 familias que perderíamos los empleos.
But everything has changed right now. Like my colleague has said, my work colleague has says, it's more than 100 families that are going to be losing their jobs.
Muchos de ellos son personas ya muy adultas que sería difícil para ellos encontrar otro trabajo.
You know, a lot of those people are, uh, people, uh, elders that are gonna have a very difficult time finding jobs.
Ah, también en el verano todos estos años se le da trabajo a jóvenes.
Also during the summer, you know, they're offering jobs for the young people.
Donde se les da la oportunidad de tener un trabajo por primera vez y empezar a, y empezar a desarrollarse en la sociedad.
Where they offer these young people the, the opportunity to have their first jobs and be able to develop as human beings in the, in society.
Por eso estamos aquí para pedir su ayuda.
That's why we're here to ask you for help.
Y esperamos que nuestros representantes, el señor Garcetti y el señor Buscaino.
So we're, we're, we're hoping that our representative, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Buscaino...
Con todos ustedes puedan ayudarnos a cumplir la promesa y reubicarnos mientras nuestro lugar de trabajo...
Can help us, uh, you know, um...
Gracias.
Thank you so much, and have a good day.
Yes. Next speaker. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Council. Happy New Year. My name is John Osley, and I'm an employee of the Ports Call Restaurant. I've been an employee since I moved to Southern California four years ago. I'd just like to echo what many of my coworkers have said, that, uh, this restaurant is so much more of, uh, than just a restaurant, it's a part of the community, it's a part of our history, it's a big part of San Pedro's history. I don't have a lot of family in Southern California, but I can say that the people at the restaurant have become my family. Since I've begun working there, I've learned to speak Spanish. Uh, the people there have encouraged me to apply to go back to graduate school, and since then I have. And I've, uh, asked for one of the letters of recommendation to be from my managers. Uh, this restaurant means the world to me and to the community, and it would be a true disservice to San Pedro if it were to close. President Wesson, I served you in our restaurant. Please help us stay open the way you did with the proud bird. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker, and I'm looking again for Adrian Barbosa, Mariah Montez, John Wesum, Ada, and Carrie Palmer. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, good morning. My name is Jacob Costa, and I've been living in San Pedro for twenty-three years now, and I've been working at Ports Call Restaurant for four years. I'd just like to address a few things. Um, on September twenty-ninth, two thousand nine, the approved San Pedro Waterfront Development Public Market Project Certified Final EIR Section one five-two-two states, quote, "Relocation and/or renewal of existing tenant leases." Um, the Ports Call Village shops were also told that they would be able to be temporarily relocated during demolition and construction to another onsite area until the public market was, was complete. Um, however, on May nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, the Port of Los Angeles Board of Harbor Commissioners approved a permit lease with the developer and a new fifth addendum seven years after the final EIR was now approved. This is where Phase One of construction essentially became a part of Phase Two. Um, the Port of Los Angeles failed to provide public notice, and, um, this, it requires public disclosure. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Do you need translation?
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Mariah Montez.
My name is Mariah Montez.
Soy empleada, empleada de Puerto Call Restaurant.
I am an employee of Ports Call Restaurant.
Spirit Cruises.
Spirit Cruises.
Y el World World Cafe.
And World World Cafe.
Estoy aquí porque me preocupa perder mi trabajo.
I'm worried, I'm here because I'm worried about losing my job.
De casi diez años.
For almost ten years.
Y pienso que es injusto que lo que los representantes, el señor, um, Caretti, y el señor Buscano...
I think that the representatives, Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Buscano...
Lo que, um, a todos nuestros, lo que nos prometieron, no se ha cumplido, y no se va a cumplir.
What they promised us, uh, has not been, uh, solidified, and it's not going to be solidified either.
Las compañías prometieron que no perdiremos el trabajo mientras la reconstrucción se iba a hacer.
They promised us that we were not losing, we would not lose our job while they're undergoing the reconstruction or remodeling.
Y ahora que esas promesas están por no cumplirse, a mí como cabeza de hogar, me afecta, como le afectará a mi familia que son dependientes de mí, porque no va a ser fácil encontrar otro trabajo.
And because they're going, they're breaking these promises, I am the head of the house, and myself, like other families, and we're gonna be losing our job, and we're gonna be affected by that because we are going to have a difficult time to find another job.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, sir, in the light tan jacket, yeah, what was your name?
Right. I was here last two months.
Just, just come on up for a minute. Come, just, I can't hear you from there. Come on up. Did you sign, what?
Yes, I did. I signed in at the other side.
Did you sign up for an, a specific item or for general public comment?
First of all, I'd like to address Happy New Year to the whole council.
No, no, what did you, I'm just trying to find your name.
An update from the last time that I was before the council.
Okay, what's your name?
William Ira Scott Wright. William Ira Scott Gar Wright, Jr.
Okay, well, I'll give you, uh, your, uh, public comment. Go ahead.
No, look out. I asked Mayor Garcetti, I asked Jane Perry, and I asked you, and I asked Price to be here only, because simply you cannot invest in anything that does not exist. This rail system, I talked to the mayor of Ochita, Paris Monroe, about the transportation shelters, and also Canada, about the rail stuff. They have a counselor here, a counsel. I'm also concerned about the ten million dollars that were sent back, that is part, came out of my Federal Reserve account here. So, that was in private, it's not under public law. So, I would like it sent, some of it, at least the card, the Visa in, and the debit, so I can complete this project that's been started since Tom Browder's administration. I would like for it to come out of the first Bank of America and fly out of my car. That's it, I'm through. Because I have, cannot get back here until, after February, I have a dental appointment in Streetport Barksdale.
Thank you. Okay.
Oh, P.S. Those transportation shelters, I have to go to the Congressional Library to complete it.
Thank you, sir.
I've already promised, they're opening, closing, that's the brain finance.
Thank you.
I can take them.
Thank you. Your name? Yes.
Mary Palmer.
I called you, we, you, I sure did.
You did, thank you.
Yes, I did. Come on up, Ms. Palmer.
Thank you. Um, so I'm here today because I'm very concerned about the safety, the public safety in my neighborhood. I live in nine zero zero four seven. Um, I've lived in that neighborhood for about ten years as a homeowner, and, um, several things have happened in the last ten years. Um, one being that I live behind an alleyway, and a lot of commotion goes on in the alley. Cars have been driven through the alley and on fire, and, um, I want to know what we can do to protect the people in the area from what's going on in the alleyway. Most recently, on January first, twenty eighteen, at approximately nine thirty P.M., a car landed in my living room. Um, I'd like to know what the city would be able to do about corner lots. Um, I live on a corner lot, and, um, I want to know what could be done about the safety in the area.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, we'll go, go to item one M. Is there Bruce Barlow? No, I'll send somebody over to chat with you. Is there a Bruce Barlow? Come forward. One M is in Mary.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, I'm speaking on behalf of my friend, uh, Mr. Gilbert Hagnazar. He received a citation for a building that, um, he owns, six-four-four-four Lancashire. When I first met Mr. Hagnazar, I was homeless, and it was about the time that he got the first citation on this. It was regarding the graffiti and the trash that was in the parking lot of his building. Uh, he, he basically saved me. He basically, he took me in, and as a result, I wanted to show my gratitude, so I cleaned up all the graffiti, and then I cleaned it up again when it came back, and I got beat up a couple times by gangbangers doing it again. And, uh, when the citation started to accrue, because he was unaware of the, of what was the procedure, uh, that he was supposed to go through with this, we thought that just cleaning it up would be, would do the trick, um, that... Sorry, am I out?
Okay, Mr. Kukorin.
Uh, Mr. President, this is a circumstance where the, the original citation was well-taken, um, but the business owner did comply with everything that he was asked to comply with, um, but he was unaware that he needed to have it be inspected after compliance. So what I would ask, Mr. President, is that, um, the amount that's indicated on the agenda be reduced, so that, uh, the only fine imposed would be the citation, um, accrued interest, and processing and other fees for an amount of six hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-two cents rather than the amount that's, uh, indicated in the file.
Okay, I'll second that. All right, so thank you, sir. Let's, uh, vote on that. I, Mr. Kukorin, you want to send a staff member to maybe explain in detail? So on that item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, now we want to take up item, item two, Rafi Kazarian. Item two.
I wanted to thank the...
Yes, sir.
My name's Rafi Kazarian. I'm the president of the Business Improvement District in Los Feliz Village. Um, I just wanted to make a comment and thank you guys for giving us the opportunity last year in order to be productive, keep the streets clean, keep trees trimmed, get new trash cans with the help of City Council. Uh, thank you for that. Um, we've done a lot, and there is a lot more that we want to do in twenty eighteen, and we would appreciate being, uh, reconfirmed for one more year.
Thank you, sir, for coming down.
Thank you.
On that item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Now, uh, I believe we can vote now. Mr. Clerk, on the remaining of item one.
Mr. President, before then, there's been a request from the department to continue items one D and one N, as in Nancy, to February nine.
Okay, without objection, so ordered. Now let's vote on the remaining items on number one. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Mr. Caretz, uh, item thirty-six.
Yes, uh, I'd just like to make a, a small technical amendment where it references, uh, the acreage of the Skirball, Getty, Bel Air, whatever you choose to call it, fire. Um, it is listed as sixty-five-hundred acres. That was an error, and that should be replaced with a correct number, which I believe is four hundred and seventy-five acres. And, uh, thank you to Mr. Previn for catching that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Caretz, and thank you, Mr. Previn. Okay, on this item, let's, uh, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
And that vote is as corrected, right, Mr. Clerk?
As amended, sir, you are correct.
That, uh, brings us where?
Mr. President, Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted, they are referred.
The desk is clear.
And, thank you. Announcements, members? Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I'd like to, uh, make everyone aware, including those of folks that are, um, listening to our meeting this morning, January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and tomorrow my office will be joining the U.S. Department of Homeland Security's Blue Campaign here in Los Angeles. I want to ask all of you to please wear, uh, blue tomorrow in recognition of Human Trafficking Awareness Day. We're also ask some of our city partners around the city to light their buildings blue. So at sunset tomorrow, LAX's pylons will go blue, the U.S. Bank Tower will go blue, Union Station will go blue, the fountain at Grand Park across the street will go blue, and Caltrans Plaza will also go blue as, uh, well as many other buildings throughout the city of Los Angeles. I ask you to wear blue tomorrow, not only to stand with the victims of human trafficking, but to also send a message that in Los Angeles, we stand firm, that this will not take place in our city, and we need to do everything we can to eradicate this epidemic in our country and in our city. If you choose to wear blue tomorrow, I ask that you send pictures to my office, and we're happy to promote it in our social media awareness campaign and hashtag Blue Campaign L.A. so that we can spread the word and the awareness. We're also gonna be talking about our toilet tea drive on Friday, where, which I hope all of you will also participate in. Thank you very much.
Now, thank you. Thank you for your leadership on this item. Any other announcements? I don't see any. Could we please rise, uh, for adjourning, Mr. Englander?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I ask that today we adjourn in memory of a spiritual leader in our community, Esteban Steve Cruz Calma. This holiday season, on December twelfth, Steve passed away in our community and suffered, we all suffered, monumental loss. Steve was born on March twentieth, nineteen thirty, in a small village in the Philippines. He was the oldest of six children in a community of farmers. After surviving the Japanese army's occupation of his village, and later a serious case of tuberculosis, Esteban embraced the ministry of the United Methodist Church, and then he began his education at the Union Theological Seminary in nineteen fifty-one. While he was a student, he started working as a part-time local pastor in nineteen fifty-two. He became a full-time local pastor at San Miguel United Methodist Church in nineteen fifty-three. Reverend Calma was ordained as an elder on February ninth, nineteen fifty-eight, at the Philippine Annual Conference, the same year he met Fay Goma, who became his wife. They were married in nineteen sixty-one and celebrated fifty-six years of marriage. He was a positive, energetic, and inspirational member of our community. He continued his education at Ash, Ashbury Theology Seminary in Wilmore, Kentucky, and completed a master's degree in div, in divinity in nineteen seventy. He then attended Fuller Theological Seminary and moved his family to Pasadena, or became the pastor of Rosewood United Methodist Church in Los Angeles. In that role, he worked closely with then-councilman Ferraro and local community in Los, in the local community as Los Angeles was experiencing a boom in the Filipino community. He went on to serve as the pastor at Ashbury Baldwin Park, Fontana, and San Dimas United Methodist Churches. Nineteen ninety-five, he retired, happily lived with his wife at the Colonial Baker Home for Retired Ministers in Roland Heights, California, where he remained actively involved in the community. Reverend Calma represented the best among us. He was praised as enthusiastic, hardworking, was passionate about his work and philanthropic efforts to improve the quality of life in our communities. He will be missed by all. Reverend Steve Calma survived by his wife Fay, his three daughters, Debbie, Dorcas, Denise Majewski, their two sons-in-laws, Rick and Chris, seven children, and three great-grandchildren. May he rest in peace, and our hearts, our thoughts and prayers are with the family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. And to I.T., is there a way, I'm gonna just move quickly away from our adjourning portion because we have some lovely young kids that are with us today. Where are you guys from? I'd like for them to be acknowledged. Yeah. Are they from your neck of the woods, Ms. Martinez?
Westland School on Mulholland and CD eleven.
Westland School on Mulholland and CD eleven. Let's give them a round of applause. Welcome, young people. See yourselves on television? Okay, now I need you to calm back down. Calm back down, no jumping. And I want to go back to the seriousness of our adjourning motions. Mr. Bonin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I have two, uh, two sudden and unexpected deaths over the holidays. The first is for a constituent of mine from Westchester, Betty Pelka, whose, uh, daughter is a friend and neighbor of mine across the street. Betty Jean Hurley Pelka was sixty-eight years old and passed away on the morning of December nineteenth in her sleep. She wasn't sick, she just died in her sleep suddenly and unexpectedly, uh, dealing a real holiday blow to the family. Uh, family says she was truly the heart and center in life of her family and her friendship network, saying she was even more beautiful, giving and loving on the inside than she was uncommonly gorgeous on the outside. Uh, she's been married to David Pelka for forty-eight years. They would have celebrated their golden anniversary in twenty nineteen. Uh, fabulous marriage. Suzanne says Betty treasured her family and friends above all else in life. There wasn't a holiday she didn't extensively decorate the house or fail to celebrate with just the right meal. Uh, if she, if there was a party, she was there, always ready to have the most fun of anyone, and forever dressed to the nines. She loved dancing, ballroom, swing, tango, and any kind, jokes and laughter. They say she had a beautiful and easy belly laugh and smile, and smiles in her eyes and on her lips, and always something sweet to say. Uh, they say she took care of everyone, those down and out. She literally took people in for months on end. She fed all the elderly neighbors in Westchester with delicious meals she would regularly cook. Uh, she is survived by her husband, David, uh, by her son, Eric, uh, by her daughter and my neighbor, Suzanne, uh, by her mother... Suzanne, by her mother Helen Hurley, by her sister, two brothers, and her four grandchildren, including Gabriel and Lucas, who live across the street from me. Real sudden and horrible. Her memorial services are actually this weekend with a Catholic mass at Visitation Church in Westchester at 1:00 PM. Second person I'd like to adjourn in memory of was also a very sudden and unexpected loss, and it's someone I think most of us know, Mo Stavneser, who was on the board for two decades of the Los Angeles League of Conservation Voters. I know Mr. Blumenfield wants to join me on this one, as some others might as well. I've asked a couple of his board members who are here with us today, Tom Eisenhower and Jim Kennedy, to be here. Mo was, if you've ever run for office and were interviewed by LALCV, you undoubtedly met Mo. He was invariably on the interview panel. He was one of the folks who badgered you twice a year to come to their events and help sponsor their vote, their votes. He was tireless in the work he did for various organizations. And he died on December 28. And it was a huge blow. He was a social justice and environmental champion. His activism in California began as a member of the Venice Town Council back in the 70s and 80s, and with the passage of Prop 20, which was the Coastal Act in 1972. He appeared before the Coastal Commission numerous times as an advocate for affordable housing, for coastal access, for community preservation, and for the protection of natural resources. For that work, all the way back in 1978, Mo was honored with an award of merit by the state of California. He was the founder and board member of two statewide coastal protection organizations, PACE, which stands for People Access Coastal Environment, and the League for Coastal Protection that advocated for a variety of issues before the Coastal Commission and the courts, most especially the Bayonne Wetlands in my district. In the 80s, Mo was one of the founding board members of Heald Bay, and he served as their vice president for a time. He was also on the Board of Venice Community Housing Corporation, and he served as their president. He served on various boards for Liberty Hill Foundation, including their Environmental Justice Board and their Board of Directors. He was a founder of SMUR, Santa Monica for Renters' Rights, which is a huge force in the city of Santa Monica. They won rent control for that city. In 87, he was part of the steering committee that got Ruth Galanter elected to the council. He was on the LALCV board for over 20 years, including five years as president, and he was serving as treasurer when he passed away, and was one of the founders of the group. LA is cleaner, it's greener, it's more just, more people have access to the coast, and more people have affordable housing because of Mo. He was a little guy with a, with a big heart and a huge spirit and was just absolutely unstoppable. And I know that there's generations of elected officials and activists that he, he took under his wing and he mentored, just an all-around great guy. And it was a shock to hear the news over the holidays that he passed and a real blow. And I'd ask that we adjourn in his memory and may he rest in peace.
Bob?
Thank you. Just want to add a little bit to that, and thank you so much for adjourning in Mo's memory today. He was, and he, I actually think he was on the LALCV board for over 30 years. I had the pleasure of serving with him for a number of years. In fact, I still remember when he recruited me to the board, and he would say, this isn't like another board. This is, we actually do all the work here. There is no, there is no executive director that's paid, there's this and that, you know, but if you're going to be part of this board, you're going to, you're going to dig your heels in and work on it. And, and it was great. And that's, that's what that board was about, and as you guys know, and Mo carried that to the nines. He had an infectious laugh. He really was a hoot of a guy who did so much for so many. It's, it's hard to believe that, that he's, he's left us, but his, his legacy will certainly continue on in all of us and the great work that he's done. So thank you for letting me add on to this adjourn.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes. Thank you. I also have to say a few words about my friend Mo. Thank you, Mike and Bob. I'd also like to add my name to his adjournment. I was in real shock when I heard that he had passed away during our break. And I just want to say this about Mo. He has to be one of the few people that ever reached out to me when I started to run over a decade ago for office, and one of the very few members of LALCV who was really committed to ensuring that communities like the communities that I represented were represented politically. And that meant the world to me. Because at a time where environmental justice was not something that was a word that we threw around in the northeast San Fernando Valley, Mo was that special guy that ensured that the southeast cities and the communities of the northeast San Fernando Valley were at the table, getting its fair share. I think Mo is one of that, you know, and I know he's looking down on us and smiling because he was just that special to me and to so many people that looked just like me, that wanted to ensure that, you know, our causes were being taken seriously, and that we, when we sought to run for office, that our communities got, they got behind us. And so I just want to thank you. I was really in shock. I had no idea that he'd been this sick. I know he had some health issues in the past, but I'm truly going to miss him and his amazing passion for justice. So thank you, guys.
Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'd just like to add, I've known Mo for over 40 years. I met him when some of the coastal measures were going on in the early 70s, and when he was one of the founders of LALCV. And I didn't know about the group when it had been founded and ran across him at a table on the Santa Monica Pier, and he got me more involved in environmental political activism, trying to support environmental issues and candidates that were concerned about the environment, which I have continued to do until this day. So it's hard for me to imagine the environmental movement and politics in Los Angeles without Mo, but I guess we, we will sadly have to do that. And I'd like to be added to this as well.
Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to be added to, to the adjournment. I, I believe he, I didn't know him as much as many of you have known him because I think he worked in this arena even before I was born. But he was a staple. He was always there to greet because he was also always most likely doing a registration table every, every event I went to. And I recall, I think he was on the endorsement committee when I first ran myself, and endorsed me. I mean, it got flipped later on, but the endorsement committee that he sat on, where we met, endorsed me, and I remember that. Yeah. But he will be very much missed.
Okay. Any other adjournings? Oh, Mr. Rue again?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to adjourn today's meeting also in the memory of Reverend Dr. James Hester Hargit. And I know, Council President, you know him as well. He was an advocate for the downtrodden. He was an activist for justice and civil rights, an organizer who called upon all of us to follow the better angels of our nature. Reverend Dr. Hargit was born in July 24, 1930, in Greensboro, North Carolina, where his father was a pastor. He got his Masters of Divinity at Yale and Doctor of Ministry from Colgate Rochester. He preached in Ghana, Nigeria, Jamaica, Haiti, and became the first African-American Protestant minister in Hawaii, serving a majority of Japanese-American congregation. He came to Los Angeles in 1958, where he led the congregation at the Congregational Church of Christian Fellowship and became active in the civil rights movement. He joined Martin Luther King for the March on Selma, and later became King's West Coast representative of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference. When King was killed in 1968, Reverend Dr. Hargit carried on his legacy. Hargit raised nearly half a million dollars for the SCLC, and he started programs to help poor African-American kids get to school and also get adopted. Furthermore, and this one is very, very close to my heart, he helped co-develop the Central City Community Mental Health Clinic in Los Angeles. This clinic, which served low-income and underprivileged Angelenos, would later become Kedron Community Health Center, where I worked for over half a decade in the mental health advocacy. I can tell you without a doubt that Reverend Dr. Hargit changed lives, thousands of lives, far beyond what he could have known or predicted. He was also uncle to one of my constituents and community leader, which many of you know, Bill Funderburke, who also serves as the city's vice president on the board of the LADWP Commissioners. Reverend Dr. James Hester Hargit was not born a civil rights icon or a champion for the poor, hungry, or tired. He only saw suffering in the world and he tried to fix it. He died as a champion, a hero, and an icon for justice and goodness in the world. And he is survived by his wife, Lou Ellen, three children, Meloni, Daryl, and Hester.
And I'm honored to adjourn with you. He was a good man, and Funderburke is as good as they get. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Coretts?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is a strange break for me because for some reason, there were seven or eight people that I knew well, and I'll adjourn over the meetings in memory of them. One of the saddest was the passing of my friend Gary Cantor, who was grandson of Ben Cantor, the original founder of Cantor's Deli, now on Fairfax, but started in Boyle Heights, I think in the 40s. He was an incredibly nice guy, very warm. He'd greet everybody with a "Hey, buddy, buddy," which became so ingrained that even their parking lot attendant now greets me that way. He, he was probably one of the warmest, nicest, and most generous people that, that you could find. He took a lot of pride in the family's deli. Every morning, he would hand-cut the roast beef and corned beef and pastrami himself in the morning. He greeted everybody warmly when he was there on the morning shift, and he expanded Cantor's to other places. So he personally worked with hotels in Las Vegas, with LAX, with the Dodgers, and put Cantor's in those locations. And he was a huge baseball fan, and so Ned Coletti actually spoke at his memorial service and told a number of pretty humorous stories. In fact, that was the most enjoyable memorial I've ever been to because everybody just had funny stories about Gary, and there was nothing, nothing too serious. Ned noted that Gary was such a baseball fan that once he got Cantor's into Dodger Stadium, he started to just show up and visit. And at some point, Ned had to say, look, you can stay and talk to whoever you'd like, but I'm limiting you to one hour a week. Otherwise, we're never going to get any work done at Dodger Stadium. Just a super-nice guy, and he was very generous in so many different ways, and everybody who spoke talked about his generosity. I didn't get a chance to speak, but my best story of him is, I'm a huge baseball fan and a Dodger fan, so is he. We each had gone, I'm sure, to hundreds of games. And I had always had the misfortune of never catching a baseball at Dodger Stadium in over 50 years. So if you've ever sat with me, it guarantees that a ball will not be hit within 100 feet of me, never come close in my life. So I told him that story, and the next time I came into Cantor's, he went into a back room. He came out with a bag and he said, you know, a bag of dusty baseballs. He said, these are all the baseballs that I've caught over the years at Dodger Stadium. And he gave them to me. And it was just a, such a sweet gesture, but that, that was Gary. He was always that kind of guy. He died at 58. I suspect because he probably had one or two meals with pastrami every single, every single day for decades. That probably didn't help him, but he, he died of a heart attack sadly, and he will be greatly missed by the hundreds of people that knew and loved him.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Seeing no other adjourning motions, members, this council meeting is adjourned.